Okay, we'll call it to order this September the 28th, 2016, meeting of the Franklin County Commission. Roll call.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Present.
Vice Chair Renode?
Here.
Chair Howard?
Present.
Commissioner Harris?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
If you all stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance, and please remain standing for the invocation that will be led by Reverend Craig Robertson of the First Christian Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which is sanders, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Lord, as we gather to do the work of this community and of this county, we pray that we have ears to listen and eyes to see and the ability to make wise decisions for all. Bless us and guide us, dear Lord. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Okay, takes us to correspondence and organizational business. John?
The first thing is that we have a new assistant director. Introduce him.
Good morning, Commissioners. Just briefly this morning, I wanted to introduce Scott Moniker as our new assistant director at Community Corrections. He's been with our agency for over fifteen years, and so he comes with a lot of history and knowledge of how our, uh, the operations in our agency work. Um, I'm looking forward to having him in the capacity of, uh, the managerial role. He's already been working with our staff, uh, for several months during our transition, so just wanted to take an opportunity to introduce him today.
Anything you want to say, Scott?
Nope.
And a few words.
Excited about mine.
Well, you guys can shake your hands.
Welcome.
Nice to meet you.
You're welcome.
Welcome to your position.
Thank you.
Welcome.
The second item of business is, is that every year, the Kansas Association of Counties, um, holds different classes and trainings around the, uh, state, uh, to become, um, completion of foundations of county government leadership program. Uh, last year, Commissioner Harris did that. Um, one change is that KAC usually does this at the conferences, and they've decided that they're not going to do that anymore. That's why we're recognizing Commissioner Renode for his completion of this program. Uh, that's why we're, uh, recognizing him here today. So...
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
You have to take a selfie.
I know there's a time commitment in that.
They only had a device that we carried left us that we could take pictures with.
Is that old Joan on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, takes us to public comment. A citizen desiring to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes, and the commissioner will not take action or discuss items at this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of county commission business, and public comment is not permitted in regard to personnel matters or on pending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date. Norman, I think you're up first.
Norman Woogie, thirty-seven ninety, Bonnie Road, Ottawa, Kansas. I used to attend commission meetings regularly, and I really followed close. I didn't realize how close I followed. Uh, if you guys think things are stacking up on you, kind of have that feeling, that's because things aren't being resolved. A friend of mine, uh, I talked to about becoming a commissioner, and, uh, he says, "Well, I'm not qualified." What is a qualification? Attend to meetings? I guess so. The rest is all handed over to somebody else. When I first started going to the commission meetings, there was three commissioners, and the county attorney would come by Wednesday afternoon, and that was the council, and the meetings lasted all day. And they probably were overworked. You guys probably feel overworked too, but, uh, you got to resolve these things. Uh, one of the issues is, uh, the damage caused by negligence of the county. We know that. I haven't gone around and got signatures to, as proof. I didn't have my car aligned. D and D wanted to keep my car for a day, uh, day in Lawrence. I'm just afraid, uh, it may be, uh, the front end may not be able to be fixed, but, uh, it's drivable. But, uh, my point is, these things need to be resolved. This is a simple thing. I, I really let you guys off the hook pretty cheap. My advice was, "We're not going to do it. Sue us," is basically what was said. I don't want to sue anybody. Let's just resolve the problems. They won't stack up on you. It's, it's, it's pretty simple. Keep it simple. It's just, uh, buy good quality rock on the road, grade them up. Bob Lister did that fifty years ago in front of my house. It's still good. The culvert's in there, and it drains. It's the old riveted culvert. They did it right. He spent a half a day out there preparing for the culvert. Now what do they do? They go out there and put the culvert in. Don't even prepare it. It's, I don't know. And he wasn't an engineer, but he sure did a good job. He got all those roads that you're now blacktopping up in shape. Just fantastic. And then he went by, he came by after the culvert was put in and said, "Is everything all right?" I said, "Super. Felt good. I want to live in Franklin County." Thank you so much.
Gene, next. Gene?
Gene Hurt, one oh seven Jefferson Street, Pomona. Well, Commissioner Harris, I see you finally made it to a meeting. You sure didn't make any of them last week. But you know, when we had our meeting a while back with the people of the fourth district, I told you there was two areas in your area that you weren't taking care of. Now there's four. Those people are going to do what they feel they have to, since those issues are not being taken care of, for one. The second thing I got is, I see on the agenda today has changed from what was on the website. I wonder why. You got number three on there, which I will be talking on, and that's the visitors' bureau, because it wasn't on there as of the end of the day yesterday. So, didn't have time or didn't look at the packet to be able to see just what all the decisions been made. Normally you have that on there. So, thank you. That's all I have.
So, it takes us to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda today that need considered and approved are the Franklin County Commission meeting minutes for September the twenty-first, 2016, tax change orders in the amount of a minus one hundred and fifty dollars and ninety cents, and to consider and approve the payroll for the period of August the twenty-first, 2016 through September the twentieth, 2016, in the amount of one million, one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars and fifty-four cents. I would look for a motion. If there's no questions on the consent agenda, look for a motion to approve the consent agenda. So move. Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Renode?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Okay, first item of business, consideration for approval of council member appointments and FPC bylaws. Mitch?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Um, in 2013, you, um, did a proclamation to create the Food Policy Council for Franklin County. We've been operating under that proclamation and have volunteer membership, um, some really good members that are working hard to create, uh, new opportunities for nutritious food access throughout the county. Last, um, spring, we were awarded a grant from the Kansas Health Foundation for a, uh, food forums, uh, questions, um, that we're going to hold this fall in the various communities and among some subpopulations. Along with that grant, we had agreed to formalize, if possible, the Food Policy Council membership, um, in the, in an effort to strengthen both the communication between the Food Policy Council and you, and to put some weight to what the, um, individuals on the council are doing, uh, help them feel important and valued as to what work they're doing and what opinions and policies in the future they may bring forth to you as county commissioners. So in that effort, we've revised the bylaws to, um, to, if, if you approve them, to have, um, advertisements for twelve permanent members, well, twelve members, that would be on a two-year rotating schedule, um, that we can, um, review and recruit through the Health Department, but then bring to you for official appointment to the council, similar to what the Planning Commission does. Um, and then, but not to close that council off from anyone, but invite anyone interested in the work we're doing, uh, to attend those meetings. Um, so that's what I'm bringing forth today to see if, uh, you would approve the changes in the bylaws, the membership, and, um, be willing to formalize that to appointments to the council through you.
Okay, does anyone have any questions on that for me?
Seems logical.
Anybody else? If not, would look for a motion to approve the council member appointments and the FPC bylaws.
I'd make that motion.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, Jen?
Commissioner Renode?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mitch.
Okay, next item of business, consider authorizing the chairman to execute the agreement for project number KA four-four-four-nine dash oh-one. Jim?
Good morning, Commissioners. Excuse me. Board of Commissioners and KDOT desire to study US fifty-nine south of Ottawa from Twenty-third Street to Haskell Road in order to ascertain what, if any, improvements need to be made, including the, uh, work at fifty-nine and Kingman, the, um, in order to define the responsibilities for the work and agreements required, and the agreement authorizes, KDOT reimburses up to thirty thousand dollars for the eligible items of the study. The request is a motion authorizing the chairman to execute the agreement.
Okay, that's pretty straightforward. We talked about this before and talked about the grant money, so, yeah, there's any questions on this?
Commissioners, we do have a representative from Bartlett and West who will be conducting the study here. Uh, if you have any questions, uh, for him.
Time frame? Approximate timeframe to do the study?
After execution by the Secretary of KDOT. They won't reimburse for any work done prior to their execution.
What's your work involved? What are you doing exactly?
We're doing, uh, traffic counts, um, at Kingman, Twenty-seventh Street, Twenty-third Street, and looking at development, uh, for the Rock Creek Development Park, and, uh, seeing what improvements need to be made on fifty-nine and Montana Road, based on that development.
Are there going to be physical counts, like somebody there, or are you going to have the machine, or?
We've, uh, got video cameras.
Oh, okay. Any more questions for either one?
I have none.
Okay, if not, would look for a motion to authorize the chairman to execute the agreement for the project number KA four-four-four-nine dash oh-one. So move. Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Janet?
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Renode?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Item number three, consider approving the agreement for operation of Visitors Information Center by and between Franklin County, Kansas, and the Franklin County Visitor Information Center Incorporated.
Chair Howard, you do have one public comment on this item.
Okay. You want to go ahead first? You want to, let Gene go first?
By all means, Gene.
Gene, you want to speak on this?
What I want done is...
Come up if you want to speak.
I think he wants to hear what was talked about, because that's what he's...
You want to?
That's fine.
To go first?
I want to hear the whole detail of it.
Okay.
And it wasn't on the agenda on the website.
Commissioners, as you know, this matter was discussed last week at our meeting. Um, we discussed putting an agreement together with the Visitors Information Center regarding the remaining few items that we have to discuss. That was last Wednesday. Now, in that time, I've had to deliberately negotiate a contract with the Visitors Information Center, and they had to hold a special meeting whereby they approved said contract. So with regard to your concerns, Gene, we got this on at the last minute because there were a lot of moving parts. They had to hold that special meeting whereby they could approve this so that if the board decides to approve it today, it's done, and there isn't any need for a subsequent meeting. So, that's why there was a bit of a delay in getting it posted on the website. Um, as you guys know, um, among the matters we discussed last week were the interim staffing of the site, uh, the allocation of the remaining funds and the various VIC accounts, as well as the allocation of the remaining property on-site. All of that is discussed and in detail in this contract. As I've explained, it's my understanding, and Commissioner Renode could provide greater illumination, that a special meeting has been held, and that the board has agreed and has approved this contract in front of you. So, if you don't have any questions, I would look for a motion to go ahead and approve it.
Randy, you want to add to it?
Uh, no, the, the, very good discussion. We had six board members present yesterday morning, and, um, the dialogue was, was very positive, and I, I didn't see anything that, a couple of wordings we wanted to get changed, and Derek has agreed to that. It's not a major thing, and I, I would see no reason not to proceed with that, uh, get this wrapped up.
And, and I would like to say as well that it, the, the quote-unquote negotiations went very smooth with the CBB. Um, I dealt with Juanita Peckham, their chair, and, and we, yeah, she was great. It, it went well, and, and I think we're all happy with the document that's in front of you, so...
I think you did a good job of summarizing exactly what we talked about in the study session, so...
You still wanting to speak on this, Gene?
I'm going to do an open record request on this, except you're not going to spell it out.
Okay. With that, we look for, uh, to approve the agreement for operation of the Visitors Information Center by and between Franklin County, Kansas, and the Franklin County Visitor Information Center. Would look for a motion to approve that agreement.
So move.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, Jen?
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Renode?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Takes us to item number four, consideration of proposed revisions of the Franklin County purchasing policy. John?
Commissioners, um, looking back, it's my understanding that a purchasing policy was first developed in about two thousand and seven, um, and that at that time, uh, different things were put in. And then in two thousand and thirteen, it was, was revised as a purchasing card, uh, program was put in place, um, different things that were needed to be added and tweaked on it. And I had discussed with you, uh, some time back about the possibility of adjusting department head purchase authorization and county admin- administrator purchase authorization, uh, due to just the simple fact of inflationary prices. Things have gone up a little bit, and this allows, uh, department heads to, uh, respond back more accordingly, uh, to that. And then also, um, in my management summary, I kind of went over, uh, item by item, the things that were changed. Um, overall, the, the format changes were to ensure, uh, continuity of the outline formatting, and also correct grammatical errors, font differences, spelling, uh, different things like that. So those things were fixed. Uh, the highlighted areas have been, uh, the areas that were changed were highlighted, uh, for you to be able to see those more clearly, and I've spelled them out, um, in a discussion in the management summary. I'd be happy to, to discuss any, any of the changes, any of the recommended changes.
Questions on this? For John?
The only thing, and I don't see any way, I don't know how you would articulate it, but, uh, I've seen in other municipalities where it's kind of used as a way to circumvent maybe, uh, the process where, you know, maybe you're actually spending twenty-five thousand. Well, you say, "I bill me every month for four mon-" you know, but, I mean, ultimately it comes down to responsibility. It's our responsibility to know what's going on and keep an eye on operations, and it, I mean, you're a responsible person, and, you know, so, I mean, you can't make a policy that covers every, and, uh...
Right.
We should be noticing things like that anyway, so...
Absolutely, and that, and that is one thing that, uh, that I did point out, uh, when we first kind of, and I realized the conversation was brief at that time, um, that I went back and looked, and, and over the past year, uh, the things that needed to come to you that was just operational purchases that were above ten thousand dollars, there was only like three or four, uh, or, uh, between seventy-five hundred and ten thousand dollars, there was only like three or four. So it doesn't happen all that often, and I can say from talking, uh, working with the department heads, um, again, uh, the appointed department heads are the ones that come to me on those things. The elected officials, that's left to them. Um, but, uh, that's only, it's only happened just a handful of times, working with Jim on a few other things. So it's not something that routinely happens.
Sounds good. Anything else? Hey, if there's no more questions, would look for a motion to approve the proposed revisions of the Franklin County purchasing policy.
So move.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, Janet?
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Renode?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Item number five, consider appointing a voting delegate and alternate voting delegate to represent Franklin County at the Kansas Workers Risk Compensation for County's Annual Meeting in Overland Park on Tuesday, November the fifteenth. What, I think it says twenty fifteen, so...
Uh, yes.
I assume it's, uh, twenty sixteen.
It is. It's this year. Uh, Commissioners, we are part of a, uh, workers' compensation risk, um, pool, uh, and, and so as that, being part of that, we get to have, uh, delegates on voting on the, uh, uh, different rules and policies, procedures, and, and different things that they, uh, put in place. And then also, um, they report financials at that time as well. This is just, uh, authorizing or delegating who is going to be the, the voting delegates and the alternate to that meeting when they have their annual meeting at the KAC conference.
Okay. Um, if I remember right, there was just three of us signed up to go to this conference, correct?
I believe so.
I, I'm not sure. Joy wrote me a note that said that we have rooms reserved for everybody, and we need to know who's going to go. It's in, um, Overland Park this year. Um, and she also wrote me a note that says that, um, November fifteenth is your ECAN dinner, and that's during the conference, so, um, that may be a conflict for, um, more, one or more of you. So just something to keep in mind when you're deciding on your delegate- delegates, if the person that you might want to appoint is planning to attend that dinner or not.
Okay.
You were that la- last year, weren't you, Roy? Didn't, uh, usually, as I recall, that, don't they combine the K-CAM and the K-Works meeting to- together?
Usually do.
I'm surprised there's not already a notification out for the K-CAM as well.
That's already been...
I believe we've already got a, had a previous meeting.
Okay.
And I believe it, for that, Roy was a delegate for that, and I was the alternate, correct? Please?
I would have to look back at the minutes.
And they're held at the same time, so usually that, who does one, they do the other as well.
Did you catch that, Commissioner Renode, that Roy was that one and I was the alternate?
I think I was the fifth alternate or something like that.
Okay.
If you're at the same time, then that's not a problem. I'll be a...
We still have a month yet till this is, to earn in, so if you want me to look back and see who you voted, um, for K-CAM, I can do that, and we can bring this back next week?
No, I know who we voted for K-CAM.
Okay.
It was Commissioner Dunn and myself. I think we can do this. I have no problem. I'm going to be there, so I have no problem being one of the delegates if that is necessary, so...
I'm not going to this one to answer Joy's question.
Do what?
I said I'm not going to this, to this one, this year. Answer Joy's question.
Night dinner or not?
Yeah, I'll get, I'll look and see.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm okay with being an alternate there, too, uh, on that one. I'll be up there, so if there's one of those conflicts in there, I can help with that, so...
Okay. Yes, I would need a motion to appoint the, uh, voting delegate and an alternate, or just the voting delegate for now.
So who, who do we, which one's the logical? You be the alternate and Roy be the voting? Is that what we're...
Or Commissioner Renode be one of them?
Okay, so who's the primary?
Boy.
We're running a concurrent with the other one, right?
Right, right. We're gonna, the three of us will be up there, so, however...
If you want to make it, uh, I'm the voting delegate, that's okay, and then he can be the alternate on that one as well. That way we've got him either way.
Perfect, all right. So I would propose that, uh, I'd make a motion that Commissioner No- Renode be the, uh, voting delegate, and Howard be the alternate for the, uh, K-Works, uh, annual meeting.
Do I have a second to that?
I'll say, gonna...
Have a motion and a second, that Commissioner Renode be the voting delegate and Commissioner Howard be the alternate voting delegate.
Commissioner Renode?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Okay, takes us to staff reports. John?
Nothing at this time.
Eric?
Nothing today.
Sheriff?
Nothing.
Nick? Nothing? This is easy. All right. How many, anything else? Fast, Jim?
Sorry, I'm going to break the trend, but, um, our, our ballots were prepared, um, last week. Um, we're still working with our vendor to get our sample ballots, because the ballot is longer than usual this year. Instead of being a fourteen-inch ballot, it's a seventeen-inch ballot. Um, so I will have those sample ballots hopefully by tomorrow, and we'll get them uploaded to, um, a program called Voter View, so, um, citizens can get on and look at their ballot, but they'll also be available in my office as soon as we have them ready. So, we're really getting ramped up to charge to the presidential election. So, we've already got our military ballots out. We sent, um, ten of those out last Friday, so...
Okay, anything else? Okay, takes us to Commissioner comments and board reports. Who wants to start?
I have nothing to add this week. Uh, I, I slipped into the courthouse when they were doing the demonstration, some of that equipment, and there, it's going to be a two-sided ballot for us this year, which I think will be, uh, interesting. Hopefully that people will flip it over and see both sides, that there's actually two sides.
It does say on the bottom to vote the other side, too. I do hope that people, again, will look at the ballot in advance, make themselves aware of the questions that are on there, and, and remember there is two sides to it.
Is that a something that people, the registration table can point out verbally, say, "Remember, people, there's two sides," or?
Sure.
Yeah, that would be...
That's something we can add to training.
I've got a city council meeting tonight at Wellesley, but that's, uh, I'm, and the VIC meetings we've been having, but that's, that's it.
Well, yesterday, uh, went to, day on the farm at Sylvester Ranch. Uh, I know Randy was out there, too.
Yeah.
Had over four hundred third graders from, uh, throughout, uh, Franklin County, and, uh, they had stations where the kids learned about farming, and one of the biggest stations was, uh, they had a cow there to milk, uh, milk a machine, and, uh, they demonstrated how to take care of a, uh, milk cow, and they milked the cow, and, and it was a pretty, uh, interesting demonstration put on, uh, there, uh, day at the farm, and I commend the sponsors, uh, that, that put that... put on there at the day at the farm, and I commend the sponsors that, that put that on, because it's a real good event for Franklin County. Also, Friday is the kickoff of United Way, it's going to be down at People's National Bank for a chamber coffee at eight o'clock. Have that event going on, and also I attended the fly-in at the airport last Saturday, and had some interesting planes, included a demonstration by some people that jumped out of an airplane, so. Had a little bit of everything, and it was a good day for a lot of things in Franklin County. Wellsville's days was going on in Wellsville, and it was a beautiful morning, and the rain sailed off to Saturday afternoon, so. That's all I've got to report.
So they did, they only did a milking with the milking machine, they didn't do a manual demonstration like what you grew, you and I grew up with?
No, it was an automatic milk.
Saturday before last, attended the day-long, on Saturday, the day-long retreat for ECAN from nine and about eight-thirty in the morning, actually, till about three in the afternoon, reviewing the strategic plan for ECAN and the path forward. Reviewed that in detail, and then reviewed the risk assessment for the organization, which spans from workers' comp to employment, all the things that can pose risk to an organization. Reviewed the chief executive officer's evaluation process and further development on that. Reviewed the ECAN board self-assessment, determining where our gaps were to go forward, to help make that organization better, which is a part of the strategic plan. And then reviewed and voted on two grants for ECAN technology and weatherization, actually, three grants, and the Head Start program. That Head Start program, it's not the only thing that ECAN does, but it is a very good program that a lot of people utilize and take advantage of. In fact, there are more people that want to utilize it in the county area cover, in the counties covered in the, in the service area than there are slots available. And continue to work to try to gain more block grant money for facilities and expanding them so that there's more seats available for youngsters that want to attend Head Start. And then the last thing that we did was, we selected the new officers for the board. And it was a good retreat to, to be able to study all the ins and outs of the strategic plan and everything that helps make ECAN a good organization for our community, and that's it.
Okay. I have not attended a meeting since our last meeting. One quick question on the upcoming events. It doesn't show a study session for October the third, and we didn't have a study session last Monday. Is that a overlook, or just nothing on the agenda for that?
There's nothing on the agenda as of right now, but that may be changing.
Okay. Okay. Next, have a request entered to executive session for discussion of a personnel matter for one hour. Right. That will be with the county councillor and the commission. Let's see, let's see if we want to go in.
Do you want to make it on the...
Uh, we can go in at nine-ten, we'll go into executive session at nine-ten, and we'll be coming out at ten-ten. With that, I would look for a motion to enter into executive session.
Do we want to include administrator on call, or do you do it that way, just, just without that? Okay, that's fine, okay.
I'd make a motion, we go into executive session at nine-ten for matter, matter of non-elected personnel with the board and the council for one hour.
Second. Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
You want it at nine-ten?
Nine-ten. Okay, we're back out of executive session at ten-thirty-one. With that, look for a motion to re-enter, back into executive session with the council and the commission for additional twenty minutes. Also would like to have the EMS director on call. We're going to take a five-minute break, so let's look at the... We'll just make it ten-forty, we'll re-enter at ten-forty for twenty minutes. Do I have a motion to that?
So move.
Have a motion and, how about a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Harris, Harris.
Oh, Harris.
Ratted executive session at eleven o'clock, and I got a little surprised, we're requesting twenty more minutes to go back in executive session, personnel matter with the county council and the commission. Do I have a motion to go back in for twenty minutes?
So move.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
We will be back out at eleven-twenty. Okay, we're back out of executive session at eleven-twenty-one. At this time, I would look for a motion to discipline a non-elected personnel with the county.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we take disciplinary action against non-elected personnel.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
That I would...
Okay, with that, I would look for a motion to adjourn. You got it. A motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We're adjourned.